I would like to call to order a special meeting of the Hemet City Council. If anyone is still filling out public comment forms, you can go around the side here and see our city clerk. If you would like to, please stand. We'll be led by the invocation and followed by the flag salute.
Everyone up over, hands on your heart. Father, Father God, thank you for bringing us together tonight. We have such a great group here, concerned citizens, loving council members, and we just thank you for everything that you bring to us. And we pray to God that this city will prosper in business and less violence. In Jesus Christ's name I pray, amen.
And if everyone would remain standing and our flag, to my left, your right, and join me in the salute to our nation's unity. I pleasantly salute the pride of the city of Hemet and to the Republic which stands by our nation, our power, and individual integrity and tolerance for all.
Alright, before we begin, we will take public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak during this public comment time can fill out a speaker slip with our city clerk, and you'll have three minutes to speak. First, we'll have public comment items on the agenda. And I think everything's on the agenda since this is a strategy meeting for our city. So we'll just go first with Julian Perez. If you would like to step up to the mic right here.
Well, first of all, I'd like to start with thanking the city council and mayor for the good work you've been doing for the city of Hemet. The one thing that I'd like to speak of that's very important to me, which I think it's not just important to me, it's important to the community, is we have a park that is in dire needs of repair and not only repair, but some type of structure there to help where the homeless can congregate constantly. And it's Western Park. It's the oldest park in Hemet. It's actually the original park that we've had. Very happy for that park because when I was a kid, I enjoyed it quite often. But mainly is because it's that park in the middle of two elementary, in the middle of Hemet Elementary, and it's in the middle of the other, I can't pronounce those, I don't know the exact name of that other elementary, the special school they got going. And I think that it's been neglected and it's taken care of as of my, the problem that is there because, you know, a lot of people used to come there. They used to have shows there, art shows. They used to have a lot of community events there. Since I've been back in Hemet, I have not seen one community event in that park. You know, they've had to take down the bandstand that was nice there where people used to come and play music due to, because of the homelessness breaking into the place and, you know, using it and fire. So it's one of the agendas that I'm very adamant with, that I feel that it's time to fix that park up. It used to be a beautiful park, and I believe that it continues to be a beautiful park. A lot of businesses have no, a lot of people that are businesses have nowhere to go, a closed park to where they can sit down and have a good lunch, enjoy themselves, you know? And let's start seeing families come there and things again. I mean, it's, I don't know if many of you are really familiar with that park, but if you're not, I believe that you should go take a look and see what the problems are going on there. And then also, I give a park that's getting really bad out there. You know, you can't even rent one of the, you get, you go to get one of the canopies, and when you get there, that you've already put in for, and you've got a lot of too. All the homeless aren't inside there. They lose the bathrooms, nothing. And the one thing about Western Park, they're one of the only places left in California that actually has their own standing building that's dedicated to children. And the elderly are scared to go there and do their thing again. So, I mean, I just believe that as a community, as a group, we need to finally, you know, address this agenda. And let's have some, some things there. I've been wanting to do a car show there for a long time on the grass. I want to have a lot of negativity about the oil, the pollution, the dirt, the trash. More than a car, more than a vehicle, there's no oil dropping, you know? And that's something I'd like to start doing again as a community there to just get people back. I'd like to thank you guys for the time. Thank you.
Next up, Mary Ann Drowin, followed by Stacy Olson.
Good evening and welcome, and thank you for holding this. It's, I've been here five years, and I think in the last six months I have seen more happen and stuff going on in this city and getting things done than I have in the last five years. We've been in this drought or crop for who knows how long, decades, and finally, we now have a city council that's willing to do the work. And I really appreciate it, I do. And I think that, that going backwards is, would really hurt us a lot. So we really need to keep going forward. Ideal, I work in San Jacinto, and where I work at the senior center, there's a lot of homeless around there. Every day, every day, it is in my face 24/7. And I never thought, I've seen it on my life, but I never thought that I would actually see it every day. And just recently, I was able to call Carly and tell her that there was a girl that approached me that wanted to get off the streets. And you know what? It took her not that long, and she was there. And the lady now will be placed in a home on Monday. So that one last person that we're going to have on our streets that wanted help. So you see, it does work. And since we're all here, obviously, it is working. Thank you.
This town hall meeting is one of the most important meetings so that you can hear the voices of the citizens of this community, the citizens that voted and watched of the council members to represent their voices, goals, and directions. What is it that the citizens of Hemet would desire? Well, I don't speak for everyone. I do speak for myself, my children, and I believe a large portion of the community. I'd like to start by saying I applaud you for your desire to want to hear the voices of the citizens of this community. And it's my hope that you would not only want to hear our voices, but to honor our voices by how you move forward in the future. Otherwise, this town hall meeting is just for show. I pray and I believe that this is not the case. If indeed you are wanting to hear our voices and honor them, I am sure each one of you will do all you can to secure the seat that our mayor pro town, Joe Mills, sits in. He has been robbed of the seat that he has legally earned by 57% of the voters in his district. They made their voices very clear. They want Joe Mills to serve as the representative on the Hemet City Council. Unfortunately, someone with their own agenda came along and robbed him of that on a small insignificant technicality. And while that person may have won his argument in court, it is not a win for the entire city of Hemet and the citizens who overwhelmingly voted for him. It is our desire that each and every one of you on council does whatever is necessary in order to honor our voices as voters and secure his seat on council. Any other action would indicate you clearly, would indicate clearly that our voices are of no importance to you, nor are our votes. The citizens of Hemet also desire to have a safe community to live in, work in, and raise their families in. We voted for Measure U, the additional sales tax, years ago, and yet it appears nothing much has changed. The additional boots on the grounds that were promised, it really hasn't come to pass, not noticeably, nor has safety improved. Just a couple nights ago, shots were fired from a well-known rough neighborhood into a group of citizens injuring several and killing a pregnant mother of an eight-year-old child. She was an innocent bystander. We still see countless homeless people sleeping on our streets and more and more homeless with mental health issues and addictions roaming our streets, presenting a clear and present danger to citizens daily. How many millions of dollars have been brought in by Measure U? And yet our streets really show no change in status? Our crime is still being reported on major news networks? And our reputation for being one of the worst cities in California remains untouched? How has our additional tax dollars benefited our city or our community? We desire and we ask that you focus on doing what is necessary in order to keep the original promise of making our city safe and putting ample boots on the ground and keeping Joe Mills, where the highest amount of voters pretty much in history have asked that he be sitting in. Thank you so much.
Followed by Carrie Armstrong.
Hello, everyone. It's an honor to be standing here in front of you. Council, thank you for putting on this again. I'm a veterans advocate. I don't live here. I live up in the mountains. My address is not in Hemet. I've been coming down the hill, it's about 35 miles from where I live, for about 21 years now. I chose Hemet and San Jacinto as a place to work for my veterans. And I say my veterans, I am a veteran. I help other veterans because I am a veteran. I help veterans that are disabled because I am disabled. I chose Hemet because it is one of the highest per capita cities in the state with service to our military. My first drive through Hemet had to be somewhere near Veterans Day because almost every standit on the road down Florida had a veteran's face on it and a name, representing a veteran. I was so proud to be in my car driving down the street. It kind of gave me the chills. I love this community. I really do. It has so many veterans and so many people to help. Keeps me from laying on my own shoulder. It truly does help me. It's a form of self-help to help other people, and I encourage everyone to do the same. I just spent the last three days with veterans with health issues. In the past, over 28 years that I've been doing what I do, most of the veterans have had things like PTSD and depression and head injuries. We shifted. We're now fighting a war against chemicals, water contamination, radiation contamination, Agent Orange. I don't want to go there. I don't want to bore anyone. But we have people that served 50 years ago now dying of cancer, and science has proven that it's from contamination. We had one military base here in the United States that was contaminated from 1953 to 1987, and the military knew it and did nothing about it. Sad scenario. Now we know that we have 700 contaminated bases in the United States that are contaminated with water contamination, and it's not just the fireman phone. It's worse than that. But I didn't come here to tell you a sad story about veterans. I want to tell you a happy story about veterans. Most of our veterans that are coming to our post are being helped, and they're being helped by a manager. Not only by me, they're being helped by someone who can manage a business, a nonprofit business. Not to make a profit, but to bring people together. Someone that cares enough to put in all of his time helping veterans. Just a short time ago, I got up before many of you and talked about some of the things he does, like come in early and walk the street and pick up the cigarette butts and the papers, take the trash out, put the trash back, help make the coffee, come around and sweep the floors and mop the floors. We're talking about someone that can lead and have other people do that, but he's in there doing it himself as well. Think about it.
Mr. Armstrong, I'm going to have to, we have a few more speakers in your three minutes, so I'm going to end.
Thank you.
You come back and talk again.
I'm honored to be here, and thank you so very much.
Carrie Armstrong, followed by Joseph Rhodes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carrie Armstrong, and I've been in this valley on and off for the last 20 years. Raised my family here, came to Seven Hills, helped my brother-in-law pass. And we left and came back. We're boomerang, so anyway, I'm back. I just want to say that during that time, we've seen a lot of changes. Last six months, this council has done an outstanding job in doing what you've done within the last six months. There's a lot to do, and I agree with that. There's a lot of homeless people, I agree with that too, but there's a lot of mental health issues in this town. All of this is going to go to Sacramento when we get some things taken care of as well, because we can't all do it ourselves. I'm a neighbor of Joe as well. Yes, I voted for Joe because I wanted some change from the military moment. I know that he's the guy that can get that done for the deaths. I know Carly can get it done for everybody. The entire council works extremely hard in what you do, and I thank you for your time. I noticed today on steps and bikes going in underneath the underpass again, so they're back. That den is open. A lot of things have been missing. We are fortunate that we have a serving system in our community. Not everybody has that. That's something that I think we need to be looking at for the city, because we can't keep eyes everywhere. The other thing is the new homes that are going in over off of Thornton. They've got to put some other roads in there because Stetson Estate not going to handle the overflow, and they're going to be coming in through all areas there. It's just going to bring a lot of people. You're camped out there. They're doing drugs out there. They're sitting there in their cars. Something's got to be wrong. But again, I think for your time, there are troubles, and I know it's not an easy job. I do what I can. I feed my neighbors when I can because they're all seniors. God gave me two feet and some good cooking wares to make dinners. So if anybody needs a dinner, just call me and I'll bring it on over for you, I promise. Okay, thank you.
Joseph Rhodes, followed by Jeff Rettmeyer.
Hey, Mayor, can they add a speaker to the panel? Hey, Larry. Hey, uh, somebody guys know me, somebody don't? Joseph Rhodes, I'm one of the leaders over here at Living Way. And, you know, guys, somebody might have heard me tell you, you know, I left home when I was 14 years old. I was getting out of the streets. At the time, you know, I was 12, 12 years old, like first arrest I ever had for grand theft auto. I wasn't a real good guy, you know? I was one of these guys, strung out on the streets, you know? Now that I'm an older senior citizen, now, you know, I live in a whole senior community, you know? And I was thinking to myself the other day, how wonderful it is to have so many things to do in my community. I mean, I have everything. I live right on a golf course. It's wonderful. I got everything I can ever do that. But the one thing that our city was lacking was the same thing that I was lacking when I was growing up, and it was youth programs. Uh, more youth programs. And I tell you guys something, my pastor, Living Way, is ran by Pastor Jesse Coran. That pastor's amazing. Since 2017, he's run a boxing gym. Within just about four or five days of Eddie George coming out interviewing him, we went from five guys to like 45 guys. Guys, we've outgrown our little small building. We need a bigger place. We need a bigger place to bring in more kids. When you're only limited to just a handful of few, like Stacy said, they had a killing going on right here in the neighborhood. Listen, if the kids grow up in this, you know, if you're sitting in your house smoking pot, the kids are going to grow up thinking. You know, they see this, they live it, they eat it, they breathe it. What do you think they're going to become? I'm a child. My mother was a gang member, father a gang member, brother was a gang member. What do you think I'm going to become? You know, guys, we need your help. Carly, councilman, council lady Lyndon, we need your help. We need you guys' help. Help us expand. Come up with some great ideas. I got some good ones, a whole bunch of them. It's not only going to just serve part of our community, but serve our whole community, but we need your help. Alrighty? Thank you. Joe Mills, continue your break.
Jeff Rettmeyer, followed by Israel Santos.
Hi, council, mayor, city manager. Nice to see everybody here. My name's Jeff Rettmeyer, and I spent 21 years here in the city of Hemet working for the fire department. Right across the street, I can see the out bay doors from here. 28 and a half years in the fire service total. I was the first Measure U chairperson to chair that community committee. And so I sat there for two years and watched what was going on with the Measure U money. I hear a lot of people talk about Measure U, and what hasn't happened. One of the things I want to speak about, one of the things that it did do was open up Fire Station Number Five on the Far East End. That's my home station, that's where I live. But it's, it's been shuttered from the fire engine, and it has a paramedic unit out there, but no fire protection. And I'm asking the council members, what are we going to do about that? We need to get that replaced with fire apparatus. I feel like I'm hanging out in the wind out there. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was I hear a lot of people talk about the police officers and the lack thereof. Well, the city's having a hard time hiring those people for whatever reason. It's a competitive world out there. And I, you know, I feel for the police department, and I hope that they can get that done. We're supposed to have 90 officers by now. I think we're probably still hovering around 70. It's imperative that we get those 90. I don't know how the city's going to do it, but I hope they can move forward with that. So with that, I think I'll end it right there. I just wanted to state a few comments and appreciate everything that the council's been doing up there. Thank you.
Israel Santos, followed by Hope Rhodes.
Good evening there, members of the public, council members. I want to thank you guys for giving the opportunity to speak up there. First of all, I want to thank council member Malcolm because he is the man that, uh, my daughter wrote to him about trying to get these parks cleaned up, especially with all the graffiti and things going on. Oh, especially with all the, and, um, no, but I want to firstly thank Malcolm because he came to our house and reached out to me, my daughter, because he knew that our words are heard. It was like, I was over here thinking it was going to be a throwaway letter. I went, oh, dude, right there, let's see what happens. And two days ago, came to my person, shook my hand, and I really appreciate that. But this just shows that. Now, that's honest, that's my, 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 one of the biggest problems I'm having though right now is like, do you know that safely take my daughter off to these parks? You know, it's hard to be able to like, oh, it's clean, a syringe need on the ground, you know? I would have to just sit here and explain that to my daughter. It's the sign, like, I've been here since about 2012, and I've seen that the transient problem has just gone through the roof. And I'm just hoping, like, I understand that there's taxes and just the pandemic and everything going on. But I'm just hoping that there, I'm able to find someone who's just taxing on the people, who's helping people with the problem. Look out there, like parks and things, because like, all I'm able to take my kids feels pure. And that's some places, I don't do that well. So, good night to you all for your time, and enjoy the rest of the evening.
Jonathan Hope Rhodes, followed by Larry Clare.
Good evening, everybody, mayor, councilmen and women. Thank you for your time. Again, as last couple weeks, I was here too. I'm starting to feel like I'm part of the family now. But I just wanted to touch base on a couple things that have been in my heart for a long time. And also, I'm sure, I know that there's a problem with homelessness. I know there's a problem, we all know there's a problem with drug addiction. We all know there's a problem with mental illness. But we all need to pull together and become part of the solution and not the problem. The main thing is, is I really feel that it takes, it takes a village, it really does. I'm in a ministry called All Good Needs, and we're out here, every Saturday morning, we adopt a block. And we are down the street from Elk where, where five people were shot up and one person was killed yesterday. We are out there picking up trash every Saturday morning. And it's not just trash we're picking up. We're getting just massive loads of like trash, mattresses, everybody's throwaway furniture. So we're out there in the streets. But the thing is, is we hear a lot of people complaining a lot, but I don't see a lot of people doing a lot. And this, and this is your community. This is where you live. If you see something, say something or do something, because all together we can do something. And it's not even about the trash. You know why we go out there? Because we meet the people. And since we've been out there, we have gotten, the Lord actually has gotten two women with children in their own homes now. And three men that are still in ministries, clean and sober for probably five months now. And it was just loving on people, not throwing Jesus down their throat, because I am a believer, but just meeting them where they're at and just wanting them to get help. I don't believe in handouts. I believe in giving them a handout. I don't believe in giving people money, because I'm not going to enable someone to stay on the streets, because I too was homeless at 19 years old, and I didn't have anybody bail me out. It was the grace of God that I got off the streets and a praying mother. That's the only reason now I got off the streets. But I did want to address the council with one major issue, and we've had it for a long time. There is ministries, there are homes, there is everything for men, but there is not one home for women in this city. We have to drive women to Riverside, to Palm Springs, to Lake Elsinore, but there's nothing here for women, and we need a home for women. There are so many empty buildings. We need to come together and we need to figure out how to get a home for women and children. And my heart is for that, and I'm hoping that the council will really take heed in this. Because I know my time is up, but I also wanted to share real quick, if I could, seven years ago, or six years ago, Stacy, Carly, and none of y'all, I think, were even on the council, I think, at this time. But there was a group that came out here called Solutions for Change. Solutions for Change. And it was a five-year, was it five years? We had a five-year, um, promise for them to come out in the city. What they have done in San Diego County has blown my mind. Their homeless population was five times worse than ours, and now it's almost null, because they've taken these people off the streets who want help, and they lived there for two years, and they get a life, and they get the mental illness. Anything they need help with, they're helping these people. And these people are now productive citizens, having families and living just like women. And I just really want, we need, we need something so bad for women here. And that's my heart. So, thank you for listening. And if anybody wants any cards from Joseph, um, real quick, because we do a lot to help people get off the streets here, because mental illness is one of the main reasons why they're on the streets. They're not taking their meds, so they take dope to pacify for taking, not taking the drugs that they need to take for their mind. So, thank you very much, guys. And I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, this is actually regarding something that I just thought, Joe, today, uh, recently moved from Winchester to the east end of Hemet, or the western west end of Hemet, Fond D'Épo. And I sit there, every single night, especially on the weekends, and from around seven o'clock to ten o'clock, it's like a racetrack totally around me. On Florida, we have cars racing. On Sanderson, we have cars racing. We have cars racing. I'm scared to death, and one of these days, I'm gonna hear a crash, and a ton of cars flying over the fence onto my trailer or into my front yard. The police department needs to get on that. They need to slow the people down. They need to give tickets, because someone's gonna get hurt soon. I'm amazed I don't hear it every day, but I'd appreciate if you could help with that. Uh, secondly, I'd like to, uh, again, support my voice for Joe. Uh, Joe has been such a wonderful addition to the city council. As have you, Carl, who are, I think you guys are doing an awesome job. I hope that you'll vote him back in. A lot of people don't know this, but Joe is a hundred percent disabled, but he's a veteran, and he kicks butt every single day. And I don't know how he does it, but I don't want to lose that, man. But he's what's making this council, with Carly, do, has changed it, and it's helping the city, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you all. Thank you for your time, and especially thank you, Joe.
Alright, hang on. Next, we have Mary Morse, and she's gonna be joining us soon, so she'll be up on the screen right here. Mary, you'll have three minutes.
Mary Morse, this is John Paul Rice with the City Council Meeting. You'll have three minutes to speak. Uh, and you can start immediately. Mary Morse, you are unmuted, and you are able to speak. Can you hear me? You have to unmute yourself, Mary. It appears you're having a bit of a technical difficulty. I'm gonna move on towards. And unmute you. Want you to hear us?
Mary Morse, we all, we all do that. Everyone does understand that, you know, the, the, the city, uh, that is something that you should make sure you really learn. Uh, that you don't keep, uh, we must, uh, we are not, we are not, uh, these people are not, they're not allowed to, uh, if you have, uh, that, you know, uh, 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 the former city attorney, why enforcement does not bill for the, either the war or the force. I asked why we couldn't leave these properties or place it on the tax bill. Uh, that was too much of a bother. We are not doing what we need to do financially to cover the city's expenses. When we send a pro enforcement officer out to a payment or whatever the complaint is, we need to be able to recount that income based on their health. We can do things. Yeah, maybe we won't get the money right away, but we will get the money when the property is sold or they can afford to recount it. I see current enforcement out there, uh, they can be an income for the city of Hemet. And then we don't need to go over to Measure U and wire before we're, kind of wages for people that want money, or they're trying to stop them, the, uh, uh, the, uh, domestic use, among the most things that come in, and the system of services that are there at risk. So, I would urge you to look into current enforcement and see how they can pay for themselves as hopefully surrender to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Next, we'll try Mary Morse again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
You can?
Yes. You can go ahead. You have three minutes.
You can use that, and you can start speaking now.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, I got a lot of feedback from you, but if you can hear me, I'll go in. Alright, my name is Mary Morse, and I've been president of Human Relations Council for the last twenty-three years. And, um, and I love the city of Hemet. This has been, I lived in the city of Hemet for twenty-two years. Now, I, I live in Hidalgo, but I still work with the Human Relations Council in Hemet and San Jacinto. Um, but also, back in the nineties, I, uh, was the executive director of the Lister, the Lister Shelter. And, um, just wanted to give you just a brief bit of history about what happened at, now they restarted that fund. This was from nineteen two to nineteen eight, a year later. Um, the city had one not really good restart, and kind of scintillating all of the, uh, efforts that they were making. Um, they kept asking Restart to adjust their numbers more. And then they went to the process of grant money, and then the city didn't follow through, because the numbers had reduced and reduced and reduced. Well, um, and also, a lot of people in town have said that the homeless are important for other areas. I think it's really important to realize, or to ask somebody who's homeless, where did they go to high school? Uh, you know, where, where are they from? So, that's an important thing to watch. Uh, I know there are a lot of nonprofits and a lot of volunteers who work very hard for the homeless community in the valley. However, they, they are not coordinated together. I know that Gina Estrin was at your, uh, at your meeting. Um, she has created some resources and getting people to talk to each other. But I think that this meeting tonight is absolutely essential. And I really applaud, um, Carly and Malcolm and Joe, really, for bringing this together. I encourage the city to take a real leadership role to help coordinate all of the efforts of all these nonprofits and volunteers, and figure out the gaps in the system of care, because that's important. Then you know what other things need to happen. So, um, I do encourage the city to do that. I would love to see that as a priority in your budget, and I appreciate the, uh, opportunity to be able to speak with you, you see. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jacob Bean Surfer.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, my name is Jacob Bean Surfer. I've lived in this valley for almost thirty-nine years. I took in my first steps in this valley. And, uh, and I want to first give my, to pass off to Malcolm and Joe. This is your, this is new waters for you. You guys are doing a great job. You guys are cleaning up the community and helping with the feeding and helping with the trash. And, you know, hats off to you, and the community votes for you, and the community wants you. And, uh, we need to bring that Hemet is heaven bumper sticker back. And, uh, so I just, I'll make it short. A lot of people want to talk. I just want to pass off to Joe, and what you're going through. You're, you're doing the best you can, working hard. And it's good to see you in meetings as well, and be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you all, the councilors and public service.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Stacy. And if you already know me, I work with all through Public Service and BPS. Um, I hear a lot of people complaining about what the city can and can't do, or what they're not doing, more than anything. Um, we've been around a really long time, BPS, and Eddie knows us. Uh, we work with the communities. We try to support the communities. And what we do is we try to alleviate the stress, um, to help feed needy people. And we're not talking about just, uh, people, we're talking about communities all through the cracks. We're talking about homeless, seniors, veterans. We talk about military, we're a military, uh, 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 service. My son is also a Marine. Um, so we're very strong, uh, we're very loyal to our community. And we just want to let you know that we're out there. If you have programs that need support, and we are not an independent food bank. We are a sponsor. So, if you have a food bank out there that is struggling to help their community, find us online, find us on Facebook. We are happy to work with you. I don't think we've ever actually turned away a program, ever. And once you're under the umbrella, we're happy to supply and help in nutrition with assistance that alleviates a lot of the stress on the sys, on the city's part, because the reality is this, we can't just, they do this for us. We have to help them help us. We have to be part, like they were saying, we have to be part of it. Like, we have to help us. BPS is out there to help you. If you need help, you have to know where to find it. And it's not always these beautiful ladies and gentlemen out here that are gonna be able to, they need to be, uh, uh, but we're out there. No. We provide everything from, you know, beef, and roast, um, eggs, nuts, your proper produce. We're not just talking about little bits of food. We provide the programs that you guys go to, and these programs provide families and their household enough food to sustain itself properly with high nutrition. We all have to become part of the solution. We can't just look at these individuals sitting here and say, what are you gonna do? We have to help them. And we're here to help. And if anybody out there is part of this situation, we're there working with the communities, please reach out to us. We're here to help. We're ha, we're happy to help, actually. You know, Carly's out here. She's doing the best she can, but she's, her hands, she only has two hands. She can only do so much. So, we need to pick up the slack and help her. And we appreciate everything you have to do to us so far. Thank you.
Before we begin our exercise tonight, I, we have two more special guests here in the back. Uh, we have United Way, and we have Riverside County Fair Housing Council. Would you two like to come up and give a quick minute on what you do and the resources that you're offering for our community? Thank you for coming, and thank you for investing in Hemet.
No, thank you for having us here. I'm Sidon Cisneros. I'm the landlord of the, uh, and we want to assist our community with rental assistance. Uh, the program E-Rap is actually assisting with uh, twelve months on whatever there are behind on rent, and three months forward if they, uh, improve that they were affected financially by COVID. Um, so we're here, and as a liaison, I'm able to connect with landlords or anybody that would have, would want to pop up and, um, actually, um, gather tenants to come and apply.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm kinda short. Hi there. My name's Rocky. I'm here with my teammate Christina, and I'm at right there as well. We're from Fair House, um, Fair House and Council Riverside. We're a county nonprofit. We're here to serve all of you all too. Um, kind of here partnered with United Way as well to talk about anybody that needs help with, uh, rental assistance, especially for COVID. But we do have other resources as well, and my friend, uh, Christina, will talk about them for you. So, our, one of the main things that we are doing out here is, um, we provide, um, mediators at, between landlords and tenants when there are issues, um, such as discrimination, or, um, unfair housing, poor housing, uh, conditions. Uh, we serve a lot of the, um, lower income communities, because usually that's where a lot of the, um, the situations arise, arise. And, um, we have other, um, help us, yeah. We can also talk to you guys if you need help with, um, mortgage, lending, credit counseling. If you have, uh, foreclosure issues and you want to prevent that from happening, um, we have tons of other resources. We have counselors we can escort you to. Again, we're for the county, so we're here to serve you as well. Feel free to stop by. We have snacks at our table. Feel free to stop by. We have snacks at our table as well as free bags full of resources for you all as well.
Thank you for having us, man. Thank you. If you stop by those tables, we have great resources for you to pass out. All right. And next we have, we have one more speaker, Patty Ramirez. Okay, he's going to read her comment.
Thank you, Madam Ramirez. We received a comment, e-comment from Patty Ramirez. First off, I want to thank you for hosting this meeting. I not only live in the city of Emmett, but also work in HUSD and have three children attending Emmett schools. I have a couple of concerns. One, our children are unsafe while walking to and from school. One of our children are unsafe while walking to and from school. For example, Stanford Street has no sidewalks or are covered in four feet tall leaves as students walk to school. Our children run and risk of being run over. On many days, they have to walk over large public water. Second, this tenant has hardly any public parks around. There are many empty lots in the town that we use to transfer this town and provide areas for our youth. I appreciate your time and am hopeful that council takes my concern into consideration. And that concludes public comment, Patty.
Thank you. All right. So some, some history for you. Beginning in January and February, our council has got together and set some, we had some priorities, strategies, sessions. And we went through and established some categories here and some priorities for our city that, concerns of ours. And part of fulfilling our plan, we wanted to have this community meeting tonight. And so what I'm going to do, and I believe you all have this flyer out there right now. We have broken down these priorities into categories. We have community engagement, organizational effectiveness, quality of life, economic opportunity, and partnership opportunities. Now, we're going, going to do this at each individual table. We want each of you to identify a leader at your table. And I want you to brainstorm and discuss each of these topics. So we will just do one topic at a time. And you can take notes. There's, there's a board in front of you. And once we have completed all five of these categories, we're going to go around to each for you to present. And so we will start with giving everyone about eight minutes per category. So right now, we are going to start with community engagement. If there are any questions or comments, raise your hand and we council members can come around and try to answer them for you. But this is really a time for you to write down the things that are important to you. There's a lot of, everyone has a lot of ideas. And to bring the community together, we want to hear from each of you. So we'll start right now with community engagement. In eight minutes, I'll let you know when eight minutes is up and we'll move to the next category. All right, that was eight minutes. If you want to move on to organizational effectiveness. These would be identity. Okay, we have about 10 more minutes. 10 more minutes to fill out your finishing rap. There always, there always. We have a, we have a roll-up. That's the original six in all, mostly Friday and Saturday. Okay, so the living address, student, student's room. If you have an opportunity, please, 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 put those in place. Put those in place, though, and that's, that is, I want to know the conversation. So. Very nice to meet you and thank you for coming. Well, y'all got one mic. We're doing, we got arrows, we got arrows. You seen that? We got arrows. We got bullet bullets. We got rats. Well, they say. Well, you know, Budweiser's right there on San Jacinto. All right, we are going to start right up here with this first table on the left. Yes, are you ready to go and give your presentation? If council members want to come back to the table and if you are not finished, just continue working because by the time we get around to you, we just don't want to freeze out here. I know. All right, if you would like to step up to the mic right here. All right, and I will give you a few minutes to go over your board. Okay. We're basically the American Legion that's sitting at this table. Okay, everybody listen up. We have our first. We came to consensus. All right, we, we are going to start again. So if you want to come back. Council members to the table and we have our first table that's going to go right here. We're going to give you a few minutes to go over your board. I know it's cold out here. If you're still working on it, continue at your table.
Okay. Under community engagements, like I said, we are, most of our table was made up, all of our table was made up of veterans. And so we had some particular ideas in mind. Under community engagement, listen to the people and their needs, you know, not your own agendas. Give way to community opinions. Because of different communities, like I live in a 55-plus community. It's very different from somebody who's living in one of these other housing communities that have kids and everything else. Our voice isn't being heard. Announce your cleanups, like we did for the birthday. That was an awesome, awesome cleanup. And Malcolm just gave me the statistics on that. And the amount of tonnage that they collected was just astronomical. Under organizational effectiveness, enlarge the oversight committees. Because that's really where they're, that's where they work with the, the people. And keep Joe. He, he is our commander and we do relinquish him to you guys, you know, every now and then they'll do things. But he is an awesome leader. Quality of life, parks and effective utilization for teens. You know, we have nothing here for them. You know, this used to be a 55 only town. When I first moved here, that's all that was here. And I wasn't 55 and I felt really out of place. I'm over that now and I still feel out of place. Economic opportunity, bring businesses back to the mall. They've increased their rents so high that nobody could afford to be in there. But in South Carolina, where I came from, they have, they took their malls and made them into flea markets. Where groups, different groups would get little stands and things like that and put in there. And maybe three or four in a store, but, and it worked really well because it revitalized their area. Develop concepts to aid small businesses and small business development. We don't have anything that's encouraging people to buy here, shop here, stay here, come back here, you know, bring up businesses. You see all these homes being built. There's no businesses here. They have to, they drive to LA. There's no businesses here, they have to, they drive to LA. You know, why can we keep, try to keep some of them here? Um, partnership groups, opportunities, the youth groups, homeless, homeless people, women and children, veterans. And those at risk, and that doesn't necessarily mean people who are homeless. I'm at risk, I have a house, but I'm at risk because I'm a veteran of almost fixed income. And as my taxes and my, my, uh, mortgage goes up, I'm stuck. It's either food, or medicine, or nothing. So, um, make financial incentives to small businesses, to other companies, to housing groups. Whatever is necessary to keep people here and bring people here, you know? We are the American Legion, and we are willing to work with everybody. But in order to do that, you have to have people to work with. So we want to see more businesses come back. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, good job with your table. All right, next, do you, Sharon, Robin, Jerry, do you guys want to go next?
Oh, we volunteered Jerry.
Nice, all right.
Good evening, everyone. Um, everybody knows me, I am a pers retiree, I retired from the city of Hammett, worked almost everywhere here. So I put some of my favorites down here that I always think should be done. So we started with community engagement, and, um, we really want City Hall to be open five days a week. And that could be accomplished by doing the nine-eighty. I know when we first went to four days a week, it was because we were saving energy and all of that. But I think it's time that we can, we serve the public better if we're open five days a week. We, um, let's see, what else? Better communication with City Hall. Um, I would like to see, and I know a lot of us, especially since the pandemic, we have gotten recordings. We try and get ahold of somebody, and we get a recording, and then they don't call us back. So I'd like that personal touch, because I'm a customer service person. So let's see if we can't actually answer the phone, or if we cannot answer the phone at that moment, which of course we always can do that. Let's call them back, because that's important. I mean, if we want the community to think that the city is on their side, they need to talk to us sometimes, too. So, you know, just little community service, customer service kind of thing. And open City Hall, of course, that's another one. And sometimes our departments overlap, and we know that, and sometimes they don't lap. So we would like them to overlap, and we want to get more, um, more organized with outside contractors. Because we use them a lot in every single department. We use them a lot, and I think they need to be, organization has gotten sloppy in the last year, and so I think we need to work on that, too. And we need to include the public in things. Forums like this, um, I think it's important for people to be able to stand up and tell you what they think. Even if you don't want to hear it, even if it's painful to hear, I think you need to hear it. And so then it gets to my heart, the police department, and fulfill Measure U. And I thought we were going to do that tonight, so I was totally off, off base when I realized that's not what we were doing. So, um, but I think that's important, too. And it would be good if we could, if we could just, um, oh, thank you, I don't have my glasses on, so that's. Oh, thank you, you're so good, thank you. That's what I like, people who do things for you. And if, if we could have a session with Eddie, Chief of Police Eddie Poust, and talk about Measure U. Talk about how we can use it, what we should be using it for, what it was meant to be, the history of it, because I don't think a lot of people know that. I was on the road with the two chiefs when they were, um, talking about this, so it's, I think it's important for people to really know what it does. And we need to renew the relationships between the city and senior communities. We have a lot of senior communities in this town, and sometimes they feel like they're being left out. Hammett West, um, Larry Graves is really good about having the council come and talk to their residents. But I don't think a lot of other, uh, communities do. Um, and I don't know why either, because I personally, even if I had never worked for the, for the city, I'd want to know what was going on. Because I think we need to keep in tune, we need to keep connected. And then for economic opportunity, that's a good one, because we know we need businesses here. We know we need to provide shopping for our people so they don't get on Winchester Road and go to, um, Temecula every day. And we need the business community to work with planning, which is, hopefully, people should actually drop by the planning commission meetings once in a while, too, and see what they're doing. And you can also see what they're, what's in the works, what they're working on. And we have now an infrastructure commission, which is good, and we know our streets need help, uh, that's a big thing. And then we, we used to have a group that handled manufacturing and industrial zone property. We don't do that anymore either. Of course, this last year has ruined everything, pretty much, we haven't really had a chance to do much of anything because we've been locked up. And let's see, partnership opportunities, consortium, and I spelled it right, of nonprofits and churches, and school districts, and business community to address the homeless. And that's Carly's issue, and we know how, all you have to do is drive down the street, and you can see what a problem it is for us. And for all communities, for that matter, it doesn't matter where you live, it's always a problem. So I guess that's it for me, for our little table, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, thank you, and we'll keep that, okay? Yeah, we're going to slam these in, that's right. All right, our next table, you gentlemen in the back, do you want to go next? Excellent. Send your representative up here with your board, and you can come and make your presentation.
All right, uh, good evening, um, Ms. Carly, Ms. Malcolm, uh, everyone else here from the council. Uh, so our group put these ideas together for the engagement, uh, section, we put down forums. This Town Hall meeting, I think was, it's a great idea, but I believe we need more of these. So that, um, uh, more members of our community can, can have that opportunity to present their ideas, suggestions, uh, what I would also call constructive feedback. Since there are many issues here that, uh, have affected the city in multiple ways, in a, uh, in social life, businesses, et cetera. And I think these forums are a great way to just hear what the members here in Hammett have to, have to say. Also, businesses coming together, I think if we are able to bring businesses together and find out what is hurting them as, uh, local investors or foreign investors, I think, I think that'd be great. Uh, not just to do the Chamber of Commerce, I myself, uh, my family, we own a, a retail florist here in Hammett. And, uh, uh, we are part of the Chamber of Commerce, however, I have not seen the Chamber of Commerce do much, except, uh, in the past, prior to COVID, shake hands, network meetings, press out business cards, and that's it. I haven't seen nothing really proactive coming from business leaders in that sense to help the community. Um, also, uh, social media, uh, I do follow the City of Hammett on social media, but I think, um, the City of Hammett should, uh, really focus here in this area to reach out to more members of the, of the, uh, of the population. Um, and also do like live group streams, live forums via social media, via online, um, to have, uh, more of a, of a group gather-ness also, uh, and have that social media presence. Whenever there's something going on in the city, any event, any activity, just put it up there, uh, so people are aware. Also do a, a police and/or fire department park takeover, where we have like members of one section go to a park and just do like a, kind of like an outreach thing with the, with the members of the community. And either do a barbecue, a cleanup, something of that style, where also members of the area can also get more involved with the police department and fire department. Uh, not just a coffee with a cop. And also do activities that are community-based, I think we need more of those. Uh, I did reach out to, um, to Parks Supervisor Charles Russell for Earth Day, and to Mr. Malcolm as well. Uh, I'm, I'm from the Light of the World congregation, and I reached out to him to ask him, is there anything that Hammett is doing for, um, Earth Day? And I know we had the, uh, trash, uh, the CRNR, right, over here on, on Harvard, S L Harvard, right? Uh, but I told him, is there anything now that, that is more community-based? A lot of cities throughout the world did a park cleanup, um, planted trees. I asked Mr. Charles, hey, is the city doing that? Uh, yes, but, okay, can volunteers participate? No, it's just for the employees. I think if we have, uh, volunteers, you know, uh, if they are given the opportunity to like plant trees, I think that'll be a more meaningful impact, more positive and social impact for the community as a whole, for any age group, you know, to do something like that. You know, not just the landscaping company that is contracted by the City of Hammett. Plus, it's, uh, you don't have to pay them, all right? Uh, for organizational effectiveness, a list of outreach groups, non-profits, volunteer groups, that can aid the city with different, uh, uh, programs, or to create new programs, uh, that the city may not be able to handle directly. Also streamline records and business licensing, uh, permits, et cetera, that can be a pain in the butt sometimes. Um, I've been trying to get, to get ahold of building for quite often, for weeks, and it's been, it's kind of difficult. So we can streamline that, I think that'll also help promote economic development there. Quality of life, tap the amount of bargain stores, checking bells, liquor stores, motels, that also offer vouchers to the homeless. Uh, because, uh, we believe that we need more quality businesses that can cater to a better, uh, lifestyle here in Hammett, not just, you know, bargain stores. Uh, also, of course, the homelessness, uh, homelessness issue, also eliminate urban camping, uh, as well as more motor, uh, traffic cops for those street racers, people crossing red lights and then, uh, stop signs. Improve city landscaping, such as parks, sidewalks, et cetera, just more greenery out there. And again, this is something that also can be, can be a, uh, an, an activity done by the community. Um, also beef up code enforcement, uh, make that department bigger, and make them, uh, a more proactive team. Right now, they're just reactive, or you call in, complain, uh, or submit a complaint, and they'll go out. Otherwise, they don't go out, they're just in the office for the most part. If we have a, a larger code enforcement department that is proactive, I think they can, uh, address a lot of like these code violations, like dumping, illegal dumping and all that stuff, um, as soon as they occur. Also create new loitering laws or ordinances, um, and also a homeless shelter. I know that, uh, when I was with Mr. Malcolm on Monday, we kind of discussed that a little bit, and, uh, you know, and have, uh, maybe like an ordinance. But I believe we would need a, a homeless shelter for that. Economic opportunity, also offer tax breaks or incentives to larger businesses, not just franchises that are food and beverage, we've seen a lot of that, and that's good. But the city needs more of a variety, more of a mix in this business environment. Uh, promoting and streamlining applications that would fall under building, planning, and business licensing departments. Uh, and also, uh, by promoting this, create more jobs. So that more people can have more of an opportunity to, uh, have more jobs here, not just like the low trade jobs, but also professional jobs, and also, um, get people from the tech industry. Here in Hammett, there's a lot of vacant, uh, lots here in Hammett, I think that if they're put to good use, and we can offer an, an incentive to the tech industry, uh, I think that would, uh, create a lot of valuable jobs, as well as economic impact. Also warehousing zones, zones that actually allow for warehousing. I do, I, I do have a business partner that was trying to open up a warehouse here in Hammett, but his permit got denied for whatever reason it was. So I think if the warehousing, uh, were to be, you know, um, permitted, that would also help create jobs. Partnership opportunities, uh, the city of Hammett can partner up with like, uh, skate and/or bike shops, uh, that can collaborate with the skate park that has been in the talks at the, uh, city council meetings. Uh, the, the skate or bike shop can organize events, and also organize its maintenance, and maybe, you know, can be, offer a subsidy for maintaining, uh, its, its, uh, its, uh, maintenance there. Also partner with the Hammett USD to open pools for public during, uh, the summer. Uh, I think we need more pools here in, in, in Hammett to be, uh, open to the public, not just the one over by the lake. Um, also partner with sporting goods stores to promote wellness campaigns, uh, for jazz, community, uh, uh, games, uh, sports, races, et cetera. And that's all.
Thank you, good job, that's great, make sure, um, I get your contact information before you go.
Yes, I'll send you an email, I did, I did send you one a few weeks ago, but.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, Sue, Sue, do you want to go next?
My name is Sue Lucian, and I thank you very much for having us evening, it's just wonderful to be informed more and be able to talk to a lot of people. And, um, I had two other ladies, uh, sitting with me, and they left, so here I am. I'm not as informed as some of the people ahead of me, I'm just, uh, like, feeling like a child or something. But anyway, we came up with the community and, uh, engagement, is just to continue these, uh, Town Hall, uh, meetings. And then, uh, better notification on where and when the meetings are. Now, I knew about the meeting because I belong to an organization that knows, but they didn't know. The one lady said she found out on, uh, Facebook, and then the next thing you know, it was gone, and then she had to think, well, what did I read? And she couldn't find any more, but she found out that she could come, and then she asked her friend. Um, and then, uh, they suggested that the, uh, the meetings would be posted on, uh, the website or something, uh, we weren't sure if it was. Then organizational effectiveness, um, we just, uh, thought, just listening to the community, um, the community needs, and, uh, it looks like it's doing that. Uh, quality of life, um, we have, um, have the code enforcement do their job better. Uh, I know where hands are tied because up in Sacramento, and they say you can't do this and can't do that, but we can work on what we can do. Um, and then, uh, more homeless shelters, we worked on this, uh, what, before the virus, and, um, so now, kind of like, what are we going to do? I read that, uh, Lake Elsinore and Paris have a really good way of taking care of their homeless, so, uh, maybe we can look into that. Um, and it, um, incentive, incentive, uh, for homeless to help clean up their community, kind of get them in, interested in keeping their. them interested in keeping their own area that they're in cleaned up. I don't know how, you don't want trash cans and then the trash company come and get them or whatever, but they seem to get a lot of trash around the homeless. And then use the finances wisely. And more police. I think we have a false security with this one organization or security company that comes around, because by the time the people call them, then you wait for them, and then they call the police, and then they wait for the police, and it just kind of, a lot of hesitation because of that. And I don't know what can be done about it, but I just wanted to mention it, that Neighborhood Watch has been disbanded, because we have these trucks running around and the people, the bad guys know when they're going to be around. Down, two houses down, a car was stolen. My daughter was out in the driveway, and of course she ran in the house when she saw these two guys go around, come around, and then they find out they're still in that car. Then a few days later, or a few weeks later, they came to our house, and I had to get a whole new threshold, because they tried to break in, because they didn't see a car in the driveway, thought maybe it was, you know, nobody there, but my daughter was there, I wasn't. And she, what are you doing? And so they ran, but, so that it isn't kind of helping, as far as I can see, to have this other, you know, we need more police. The police are important. Economic opportunity, the only thing I could, we could think of is like, the roads, some of the roads are so bad, you know, that when you're trying to get around to these stores and stuff, you know, and then maybe some of the businesses don't want to come in, maybe because, you know, what the environment looks like. Partnership opportunities, we just thought, just partner with these cleanup organizations and the youth activities, and tonight, hearing about all this, I'm just thrilled. I just feel it really good that we're going to be really accomplishing things. Thank you.
Hey, they told me to be fast, so, you know.
Go get it.
But I don't know how fast I am. So just know that some of these, I didn't write all these on here, but a lot of it is, it's kind of like in a one big circle, it's all been thrown in there, so some of it may have been repeated. In our, in our engagement, community engagement, one of the guys wrote down the interaction of the homeless. They want to know what kind of things that people need, as we know, most, most all of us know that mental illness is probably about eighty, maybe eighty percent of most of our homeless, and so we really do need to kind of address that and figure out what kind of things that we can do to get our community more involved. One of the guys wrote on here, he's a veteran, he wants to see the parks and stuff like that being cleaned up, being able to, for some of these people, they're like really artistic, they like to draw, do all the paint and all this stuff, they'd like to see that kind of stuff come back into the parks, but as we know, the COVID, they know the COVID has changed that, and now it looks like we're coming back, so hopefully. I'm gonna skip, oh, my wife, one of the things that really just drives us nuts is the way that, you know, if you have a business, you should be responsible for, you know, the basic, your basic property. And we see this over and over and over again, where these people just let it go. They let the weeds pile up, they let people live there, they let, you know, it's just, it's kind of a mess, they just throw their trash out, they just really don't care. So we'd like to see, I know it's tough, I'm not certain, if you're inside the city, if it's possible to impose any fines against a local business outside, you know, inside, inside the wire basically, instead of like, I know on the outside, it's code enforcement, falls under code enforcement, I don't know whether, whether or not we can do anything, but hopefully we can. Our community, do you want to read it? I'm gonna read the middle. These are all the things that I love for our city. The community service for our community, as most of you guys know, it also goes along with our adoptive block on Saturday, where we're cleaning up our city. Any sort of infractions that people, you know, community service, all these things, send them to Living Way, because we can sign off their, you know, their, you know, the community service, so we encourage that. Let's see.
I just said, we need to have like a community service for community cleanup. Like when I remember in Caltrans, we'd have to go buy, on Caltrans, we'd like have to go buy, when you get a ticket, you would go buy, and we'd have to go pick up trash for the day. That's what we could be doing with our community here in Hemet, because there's a lot of trash, and there's a lot of people that get tickets. So I'm sure there's infractions where they can go in and they can help, help clean up, and that doesn't cost the city any money, and it just helps, it just helps get those people to help us clean up the city, who may not want to have to pay a fine. Number two would be mentoring for like traffic women, because there are a lot of trafficking victims that are in, within our city, and also, there's also a lot of children that are being trafficked in the hotels. A lot of times their moms are there, but their moms are trafficking their own children, and we need to be able to go in as a community and help these people, because a lot of the hotels that own the hotels, they're kicking us off the property, because they're making money off of the pants, and, you know, it's hush money, and that's not good. And I literally see children being trafficked. And then also for organizational effectiveness, like a domestic violence local shelter to help women and children, and even, there have men that have been domestically abused also. And then solutions for change, of course, we talked about that earlier, where we can come in and be effective to get people off the streets who want help. And youth organizations for homeless youth, hardly you know how many homeless youth are here, because we've been in the parks before you barely even on city council, you know, you understand it. And then there's also those that are aging out of foster care, they're on the streets, because once you turn eighteen, you're thrown on the street. So that's just one for organizational effectiveness. And then we also have the quality of life, which would be like homeless solutions, a women's home to help women, youth programs and a rec center, a senior citizen resource center, and then Joseph wants to go ahead and read down here.
Yeah, I, I'd like to share with you, number five, which is probably the major thing that I see. Like I explained to you guys, we have grown out of our, when you put the gym or the ring up inside there, it's fourteen by fourteen, which is kind of a small ring, but by the time you put that up in a twenty-four by, I think it's like twenty-four by twenty-one size room, it gets a little tight. So a lot of our exercise stuff, we have to do on the outside, and then we can all go inside and, you know, kind of work our way around. But this brings me to a really good point, and this is utilization of the Simpsons Center, but not just for the youth, but also for the senior citizens. There's like, we have a whole list of all the things that we can do for people in this community. We have volunteers like crazy. We have all the stuff in place, we just don't have the place. So with that being said, I hope, we have ideas that will work for this place and how we can make it work. We can appease everybody, all of you guys, I know everybody's got like their own little idea that they'd love to get in there, you know, but there's so many things that we can, that we can do. Let's get down here. One of the things here on the economic opportunity, you know, one of the guys said that if we could get some job program, training, like almost like a labor school, I don't know, years ago, hundred years ago, there used to be a labor school out in Batista or way out there, and it'd be nice to bring something like that here, a trade school and, you know, and apprentice programs. I don't know if you guys have gotten involved in any apprentice programs, but I know that my son does that. My son is an electrical contractor, and he brings these guys in, he brings them in at a great wage, and every, like, I think, I think they take a test every three months or six months. Every time they do, he gives them a two dollar raise if they pass the course, and he pays for it, you know what I mean? So there's lots of great things, but it's an incentive that, you know, and he does that in Menifee, but it's an incentive for guys to kind of, when you start out making a good wage and you're getting a four dollar an hour wage every year, that's, that's good money, you know? I know who wrote this down here on the bottom, it was my wife, keep good manners. We love you, Joe. Over here, this partnership opportunity. Guys, we love you guys, man, we like to, we love seeing you guys out there, you know, at Living Way with us on Saturdays while we're doing our cleanups. There are a few things here, there are several things that are listed on this thing that we really want the city to just come out and join up with us. We have an adoptive block, that happens every Saturday morning at nine o'clock. All good things, this is a twenty-four hour ministry, you can call all good things, you can get somebody's, it'll either ring to my wife or to Sarah, is Christian, there's several of them, but, you know, you need to get somebody off the streets, you need to get somebody in a home off of drugs or alcohol, those are really good things. Guys, I've already expressed to you about our boxing gym. So we also, we have a food ministry that goes out of there, I don't know where the lady went, oh, she's right behind you, by the way. But we partner up with her as well on like Thursday, she does it five days a week, she gives away meat. If we can get a place big enough to move food through, move, you know, it comes and it goes all in the same day, you know? We do, we do also ours ourselves out of the church, we feed about eighty-five families once or twice a week. And the other thing was the drug and alcohol program, we'd love to see the city really rally around us to, we can clean up these streets, we can get people, look, if I can get off the streets, and my wife can get off the streets, we live debt-free, you know what I mean? We live, if we think we have, we hope. God's been good to us. The last thing down here is that, oh, I'll let my wife tell you about it, it's the Care Portal.
Thank you.
What we have is Care Portal. Care Portal is a foster resource ministry, and it's actually around the United States, and what it does is it partners with churches, every church, there's only one church involved right now, and that's 412. And we are going to come alongside of this girl too, and it's free to sign up, and what it is, it's all networking on the internet. Say someone comes in your home or someone needs something, it doesn't matter who it is, and it's like, we need a bed. Well, all you do is type it out, it goes over the internet, and this church goes, we got one right here, and we're going to send it to you. If they don't have it, they will send it to you, or you can go pick it up, or she can bring it to you. Her name is Savannah, and she has a ministry that is a foster closet, and she says she has so many things in her closet that she has enough donations if anybody needs anything. So that is an awesome thing if you belong to a church, even within our community, you have to be a church to sign up, but it's free, there's no cost to you other than just being available to type something out. And there's one other thing that will be done, is we need paint. If you guys would be willing to give us paint, we will start hitting up the walls, we'll rally on Saturdays and paint them to get rid of the graffiti. So it won't cost the city anything other than paint. And it could be used paint, but we'd like it not to be like hot pink or purple or just, you know, paint to where it's a neutral color, so that's one thing that we'd like the city to donate, to donate if they can. Thank you, guys. All right, thank you, guys, for all that.
And also, I'm going to leave a little stack of cards with Cardi. If you guys take my card, and then this way here, you come across somebody who's drug or alcohol, eat, get off the streets, please give me a call, answer my phone twenty-four seven, all right? Thank you, guys.
Mr. Santos, in the back, you want to go next? I think I skipped you guys, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Both these plates are covered, so I'm pretty much going to gloss over, gloss over most of them, because I do really, most of them are up in the trash and trying to promote the, but she was really expressed one thing about this, but.
Clean up the graffiti at the parks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, that was all.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm going to go really fast. Community engagement, quarterly town hall meetings, this is great, we need to try and see if we can do that quarterly, if not, you know, semi-annual or something. See Click Fix app, which I use a lot, I personally use a lot, need to get that out to more people somehow, some way, for the community, so they can use it. Quarterly refuge removal, like what Joe just had over here, try to do that on a quarterly basis, you know, work with CRNR to get the large items, furnitures, that's close to my heart, all the furniture items, the mattresses, et cetera. Social media, try to increase the cities, City of Hemet, they're doing a better job, but I think it could probably be better, a lot of people are on social media. Organizational effectiveness, expand community development, I didn't write all these things, so expand the community development department to try and help get businesses here, I think would probably be good. Chamber of Commerce, oh, oh, no, the chamber cameras for the council chambers, it's difficult watching the council meetings or any of the other meetings from, you know, remotely, because they don't always work very well. So that could be repaired, brought up to speed, that would be great. Transparency, what was that one?
That's part of that.
Oh, the city website, yeah, more transparency with the city website, so maybe do a little revamping on the city website. Quality of life issues, increase code enforcement compliance, I agree with that one, we need to get more code enforcement people out there working to help clean up the city. Address homelessness, which everybody's been talking about, which I think people are doing a fantastic job already, and mental health care issues, additional police officers, I kind of brushed over that when I spoke earlier, I know the difficulties in trying to hire the, hire the officers, so, you know, I know you're working towards that. How about more volunteers with PD, like non-safety? The infrastructure, streets, you know, everybody's complaining about the streets, me and Altorah, it's true, and I understand there's a process to go through and the funds and all that other thing, so, but we just thought we'd mention it. EMD, emergency medical dispatching, it's analysis paralysis, and we're in the paralysis part, they can't ever seem to get that off the ground, so that's close to my heart too, it's important, emergency medical dispatching. So I don't know where we're going with that, but it'd be nice to see that help out the community. Economic opportunities, expand community development department, did I miss something over here? No, okay. Yeah, just, so it's more business friendly, you know, heard a lot of complaints over the last thirty years. Partnership opportunities, nonprofits, VAs, veterans, churches, all that stuff, which there's a lot of people here from the community who's talking about that too, so I think it's all good. That is all, next.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jacqueline, and in my group is CeCe and Jessie, and we have our, you know, put our head together, and we approach it as an individual, as a, talk about organizations as well as what the city can do. So for the community engagement, question was promote togetherness and positivity, so we said for the community engagement. So we said for the community engagement, um, get involved with the city council meeting as individual, so the city will know our ideas like this time. Uh, there should be promotion of monthly community event, meet and greet, uh, such as, um, uh, elections and businesses, uh, help groups, and, uh, inform about community networking with other cities. That way, um, there would be not only, uh, within our city, but also with our neighboring cities, and that way there is in there a, uh, togetherness, which promotes as a county would be a good, um, community engagement. Uh, pop-hop vendors and music, and, uh, family-oriented during holiday events, and, um, community cleanups. Then we have the organizational effectiveness, and the question was, uh, uh, let me see, uh, ensure financial stability for the community as well as the people. So we said that, uh, we should do major business meetings to connect and support each other to promote one another. Um, let me see, promote jobs and refer, uh, uh, proper resources to give a hand up, uh, uh, resources readily available, information hotline, uh, widely advertised and updates, and also to network with others' cities, um, uh, let me see, uh, yeah, uh, in the organization itself to support the city, uh, and the city support the organizations, uh, providing funds, and, uh, people, uh, uh, spending their money in the city, and also network with other places so that money is spent and we get more money. So just like you said, if we save all our canned goods and we don't eat it, we're going to starve. So quality of life, um, we said, um, the, uh, quality of life, the, uh, uh, to ensure safety, clean, attractive, comfortable to all who live, work, and visit our community. So the quality of life is a neighbor watch program. Uh, a good quality of life would be clean streets, so probably consistent street sweeping, uh, larger trash containers and more pickups. I noticed that the trash cans got a little bit smaller, and I live in a household and we have a lot of trash, so sometimes we didn't have enough room in our trash cans. Uh, cleanup parks, uh, I think the idea of a splash park in a multiple locations, like in the park, uh, in the park especially, uh, would bring people in the community from outside, that's good economically, uh, make people reduce the stress because it's a place to go and meet the community, meet city officials. Uh, and so rent control, the rent is so high. You know, one bedroom is over $1,000, and that's ridiculous. So I know there was, uh, uh, reform trying to do rent control, but it went up instead. So what happened? City council. So now we have the economic opportunity, and we answered the question, uh, the, uh, to make a hub, the city, well, we're going to be attracting people from outside and a good place to come in this place. So bring more stores to the mall, expand it, and maybe reduce prices like movies, uh, a lot of sales in stores, um, because, uh, you know, uh, in the olden days, Best Buy had a good, good deal, and they go, they have a lot of Best Buy. Well, our good, here's Walmart, there's, uh, Dollar Tree, Dollar General store, and, um, should be competitive also with the prices with our local and outside local areas. So the partnership opportunities, what we answer is, uh, uh, pursue partnerships that will increase the opportunities available to the community, including our businesses and employed and youth population. So we just say partnership opportunities for the youth program, uh, network nonprofit, uh, resource fair. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, who's up next?
I had a couple ladies with me, um, but they, they left because it got too cold. So, community engagement. When we're talking about engagement, we're talking about technology. A lot of people don't have the technology. We said go to the next door to bring information to the, to the city. Use a cable company, Station One for Spectrum. They can scroll through and see what's going on. A lot of people just look at that and say, oh, well, they plan their day that way. A written flyer that could be handed out at the hospitals, um, ER clinics, emergency type situation, giving them options. You don't have a place to go? Call 211, and that will link you to somebody that's getting that information out. If they don't have a phone, there's a phone vendor on every corner that will hand them a California phone. And I've helped people there. Posting common areas are lights. If you see something, say something, you know? Call 211 if you're in need, uh, if you're homeless, whatever. It's on the, um, it's on a lot of the light posts that I see when I go to other cities. Um, that's another way of getting it out for people who don't have the information. Newsletter to all the homes, work with the post office, you know? Here it is, once, once a month, here's a newsletter from the HEMIT. This is what we're doing. Possibly even starting a new business for a new publication. Again, we have a lot of seniors, and I'm one of which, that don't have the, uh, technology. I'm fortunate to understand it, but a lot of them don't. Um, link to comments online at the website. When you go into the website, it's a little hard to get along with, and I've, I've tried it myself, and I've called, nobody answered. And this was before the pandemic. Um, so links to comment online, it would automatically be transferred to that person's desk. It would be part of their email because it would be segregated by the system. Um, community talks, like we're having today, but get the information out ahead of time. Um, the information was deleted somehow, and I happen to keep it, but that's why I got here tonight. And then all students, juniors and seniors should do community service as part of their educational. They can go out, they can help, they can pick up trash, they can go do weeds, whatever it is. They need that as a moral compass for themselves as well, because if they don't do that, they don't see it. They're hiding behind their technology. So if they go out and they start seeing something, they're like, wow, I didn't know that was even out here, and you're going to find that. Um, the effectiveness, mental health shelter, number one criteria. Um, it's not HEMIT's fault that all the shelters were closed. It was done at a higher level, but that needs to come back, and that's going to take some time, but we need some place for those folks to go. Um, money to support that, we're looking at grants. You need a grant writer, and I know Bonnie was good at writing grants, but you need somebody in-house that can write those grants and get that in-house and have the urgency behind it. Um, a meeting place for quality of life, a meeting place, a safe haven for them to go if they, they're outside and they need someplace to go because they're afraid that somebody's going to beat them up. Um, a community center that's open 24/7, and they can go in, or they can at least pick up a phone and somebody will help them. Adopted neighborhood, business-related, um, they start helping out. They help with the trash, and the trash cans get emptied and, and the straws and everything go everywhere else. They need to be able to pick it up as well. Um, cleanup days, all city, everybody gets involved. You have an all-city cleanup, and, and everybody comes out, and we get it done. Start from one end and, and work our way through. May take us a month, and we go back and do it again. Um, keeping up with the house numbers, and that's essential for EMS, fire, emergency. I live in a community, and we brought that to them, and they're like, well, the city can't do it. Well, somebody's got to do it. It's got to be enforced because you can't read those numbers on some of these houses, and those people who are living there are not going to do it. According to the, the, um, articles in the city, um, structure, and I've read through the paper, it's supposed to be there, but it's not. And I know you don't have the, the resources, but maybe we go to the Boy Scouts and say, hey, here's a neighborhood that needs to be done. Let's get this done and then move on. Um, fire zones, hydrants, those are, you know, again, somebody with a paintbrush, call Lowe's, call Home Depot, we need paint. Um, a boys and girls club, we don't have anything like that here in the city at all, and I was appalled when I saw that because... Is there one here? Okay. I was not aware.
Yeah, we have a youth center, my city youth center on 145 North Tokwitz, but go by there, I'll give you the information.
Okay. I'm just thinking, I, you know, I live in the senior area, but there's some kids out there that need some help, and they need a place to go and a structure, throw a hoop, whatever it is. Um, and a homeless task force. You're a one-woman church, but, you know, you've got everybody to back you up, but there needs to be people out there that can help with that. The community, um, mental health service goes out with the police department. It's working up in LA, and it needs to work here as well. Um, economy, uh, economic opportunity, a job board. A job board that's listed on, on the site, on a website, say, these are the jobs that are coming in. Home Depot says, hey, I need 15 people. They type it in, or they send it to the, the link, and they type it in. That information gets out there, and then people know. It's, you know, um, bring in more stores, of course, we know that, but we need quality stores, not a liquor store, not a, a pot shop, you know? They need a quality store that's going to be here, a cornerstone. Um, again, the Boys and Girls Club, the drive-in theater, what an opportunity. There's on Stetson or Sanderson, there's a huge lot over there that's been there since I've been here. Put in a parking area, put in one of the, the traveling, um, theaters, and then on the weekends you can have your swap meet. That's also going to bring in money because there's, they have to pay to get in. That's bringing revenue to the, the city. It cleans up, you go to the movie, you got the, uh, food trucks to supply the food. It's, you know, makes sense, right? And then something that we really truly need is a Cal Fire Training Center. We have enough area, we have enough land, Damagoni, there's plenty of places out here that they can go out and they can train. California will help pay for it because they need something, and we have the opportunity to be one of the best training centers. I was living in Northern California, and they had one there. They need one up there, but we need one here. Um, the, uh, partnership opportunities, Walmart, Target, Lowe's, Home Depot, um, Burlington Code Factory, Winco, Tractor Supply, Roses, Didi's, the state of California, um, all businesses, the hospitals, put in a veterans center. Why can't we put a vet center here? They have to go to Moreno Valley for, for help. There's area out here that could be designated for mental and for, um, doctors to come, and the vets need it, and that's what the city's about. It's the seniors and the vets that live in this city. Um, ask the casinos for some help. How many people come in from outside of this, the city to go to the casinos? They go to the casino, have the casino kick back some money to help pick up some of this stuff. So that was our, and I thank you for your time, and keep going.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll make it quick. Some of this stuff, um, excellent ideas, by the way, and that last one was awesome. Um, some of the stuff that we wrote down, the others have already spoken on, so I'm just going to brief over those. Um, thank, thank you for listening, by the way. Thank you for asking, by the way. It's appreciated. Uh, community engagement, uh, Carly does a Coffee with Carly once a month to engage. She's been doing it every single month since she got on council. And we would love to see each council person, um, do their own thing and involve their district once a month to engage them in giving them information about what's going on in this, in their district, what's going on in the city, how they can get involved, whatever it is, whatever your niche is. Everybody has their own niche. Coffee with Carly is hers, but whatever your niche is, whether it be, um, whatever, you, you decide, but we would like to see that every month, one, one day that you dedicate to your citizens in your district. Um, bimonthly or quarterly district organized community family events such as barbecues, kids fun music, whatever, where we do that bimonthly or quarterly for each district. And the person who, the, the council person who's in charge of their district would kind of put it together with, um, Chamber of Commerce, with other organizations, with the vets, whatever, to, to coordinate that for their districts so that they can have get-togethers. They can have a reason to bring families together, uh, quarterly or bimonthly or whatever you feel is appropriate, uh, to get your individual districts together. And, uh, keeping Joe. Keeping Joe. Because he's very engaged and very involved in the community, and he engages constantly. So that's important. Organizational effectiveness, uh, diversify the activities of the HEMIT Police Department. Uh, have more mental health social workers involved when you have those kinds of calls. The police department is, they're not specialists in every single field. You know, it's not a one, one-man show. Uh, non-emergency homeless issues, they should have homeless advocates that they can work with, that they can call on for those non-emergency, non, uh, things that are not illegal but are a nuisance, that they can call in other people to take care of those issues rather than the police department to kind of free them up. Also with sex trafficking advocates, same thing, there's advocates out there that volunteer their time, that they can be called upon to help in those situations with some of our, um, prostitutes and things of that nature, where we, instead of sending in the police department, we can send in advocates who are actually specialists in that field. Um, also a citizen financial budget oversight committee. Oversight committee based with citizens to look over the budget, look at over how we're spending our money, what we're spending our money on, and to give recommendations as to what the citizens think that, you know, how our money should be divided up and spent on what. Quality of life, ensure the best use, those are the key words, ensure the best use of Measure U money, critical. Uh, stricter enforcement of abandoned items, items that are all over our city that are constant. We can go behind these guys, day in and day out, week in, week out, cleaning up after them, but we really need stricter enforcement of them, such as creating larger fines if trash is piled up in front of your property or whatever. You're responsible for that. Either get rid of it, or you're going to get a fine. You're going to be held responsible, kind of like with the fireworks, right? You're going to be held responsible if you're the homeowner regardless of who did it on your property. If it's on your property, you're held responsible. Same thing should go for the abandoned items, trash, uh, couches, desks, et cetera. Um, and increase code enforcement. I know that that isn't expensive, but we are, we don't have enough code enforcement for all the issues that we have here. We really don't. So find a way to increase our code enforcement. Um, support, have the council and the city support homeless solution groups, outreaches, nonprofits, be more supportive, more inclusive of those people who are willing to give their time free of charge to help in the community. Also with, um, you know, prostitution, sex trafficking, there's a lot of volunteers that are willing, but they just, they don't... but they just, they don't really get the involvement and the unity and the inclusiveness and the support that they need. I think to bring them in, to draw them in and say, we support you, and we wanna work with you, it's free, it's free, no cost to the city to work with them. And Keep Joe, I think it's important to have better quality of life if we keep Joe on our Council. Economic Opportunity, we need a representative to promote HEMIT, to promote HEMIT to businesses, to manufacturing companies, to whomever, we need someone that is brought on board, that is their key job, to be a representative to sell HEMIT. Why HEMIT? Why bring your business to HEMIT? He'll tell you why, he'll find all of our attributes, he'll find all of our qualities, and he will sell the heck out of it. And Keep Joe, we need to keep Joe. Partnership Opportunities, businesses, somebody else said this too, businesses promoting businesses, a unity among businesses, so promote business unity and collaboration through increased Chamber of Commerce involvement, so maybe Chamber of Commerce taking a greater influence even in bringing businesses together however they deem appropriate, you know, they do the Chamber of Commerce and Mixers and things like that, but, you know, maybe just expand on that somehow to bring more unity amongst all the businesses, so people actually, businesses know each other, they know the owners, they know the employees, they get involved with one another. One of our ladies works for the school district, and she said she would love to see more partnering with the school districts, getting more involved, intimately involved with the school districts, talking more often about things that matter, and, and Keep Joe, that was the big thing, was just keep Joe, we need to keep Joe, because Joe's an advocate for each and every one of these items. Economic Opportunity, if you handle the Community Engagement and you handle the organizational effectiveness, which is, oh, increasing transparency, have like, through the website, where they can bypass the city clerk to get things done, they can have access and availability for many of the services that normally they have to go through the city clerk for, kind of bypass that, have that already set up on the website so people can go in and just get it done without having to go to the city clerk, go to the city clerk, I mean, that's just streamline it somehow, streamline a lot of services that can just be done on your own through the website. And then I said Oversight Committee, and, but if you do the organizational effectiveness, the Community Engagement, the Quality of Life that I mentioned, economic opportunity is going to present itself. Without those three items, you're gonna have a hard time getting people to come here for economic opportunities, it's just, it's kind of like a pebble in the pond effect, take care of the first three, and this one will come. And Keep Joe. And that's all I got, thank you so much.
We used to have a Community Relations Department, it was a really small one, and it got budgeted out, I can't, we've had a couple of different people that were involved, and they actually not only went out into the community, they actually, they just, they were all over the place, it just, it was a very small department, it started out with one full-time person and one volunteer, I just can't remember the name of the last person who did it, and it was very effective, it was very effective, and I wish the city would consider doing that again.
Can I add one more thing? I'm so sorry. I would actually like to recommend that when we close out tonight, that we honor Rose Elgato, Tribe Council Member who passed away, so I would like to just maybe dedicate today in honor of her and her service. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else out here? Looks like we got everybody's boards. All right, thank you so much, and I appreciate everybody coming. Make sure you take the time to meet someone new, I know a lot of you have gone, but, I know it's cold, but we thought we would need warmers here on a May evening. Right. All right, thank you very much, and we will, we will take a moment right now and, as was suggested, to close, and so let's take a moment of silence to remember Rose and all she's done for our valley. All right, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.